Is the video and audio on, Mr. Manager? Thank you very much. The item on the agenda is award of the landscape and irrigation improvements for Gateway Boulevard, where the palm trees were removed. And April talked to us a few minutes ago about the amount of the three bids, Mainscape, O'Donnell, and Escape Landscaping. And Kathleen Flaherty, representing the Landscape Advisory Committee, I believe, is here. And would you like to come to the podium and tell us what's what?
Hi, Kathy Flaherty, 12566 Stony Brook. Yes, Stony, Stone, Ivory Stone Loop. And I'm here representing the Landscape and Committee because JB from the chair asked me to be here. So that's why I'm here.
The board has-
I saw that, yeah. I don't read very well, who never.
Kathleen, the board has a recommendation in front of it this evening to award a contract in the amount of $97,000 to Mainscape to do these improvements. Do you have any comment that you're bringing to us from the Landscape Advisory Committee?
The Landscape Advisory Committee did not meet to discuss those.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right. Do you have anything to help us with tonight?
Only my personal opinion. That's not from the Landscaping Committee. We were supposed to meet yesterday, but April sent us a notice because I guess that she was going to make the recommendation for the lower one, so we did not meet to look at them.
I see. Just, do any board members have any comments for today? May I invite Kathleen to have her, take her seat?
No, I'd like to talk to Kathleen while she's standing there.
Would you please stay at the podium?
Sure.
Maybe go to Rod first, because he wants to talk to Kathleen. Please, Rod.
Hi, Kathleen.
Hello.
Just to clarify, your committee did approve, although you didn't recommend the figures, you did approve EnSite.
Yes.
That's important, okay? You approved EnSite. Now, if you could, I think it would help everybody in this room, if you, like, I've got it up here, if you could get GatewayDistrict.org on, to show the pictures of what we're voting on here. And this is what the Landscape Advisory Committee approved.
Mm-hmm.
That's important to get that straight.
She would have to download it to a thumb drive.
No, no, just go online.
Oh, okay.
Just go online, go to Chrome, go to Chrome or Explorer and go online.
No, you do it on this one.
I think it's important that we're all looking at what we're approving here.
Okay. Yeah, I think. No, or not, I don't see a explorer.
Okay.
Or any type of-
We'll come to the numbers here.
You want the pictures?
Just go to-
Let me try it over here. I just hate to cut off the, maybe I can do, yeah, I can drag that over here. Here we go.
I'm looking at it now.
Okay. Okay, can you put in the website address?
Okay, now you, I'm on the website.
Over here.
Where is it?
Okay, just go to that, you'll see the, on the right-hand side of the website, you'll see-
Conceptual Plans for Landscaping.
Go to conceptual plans for landscaping.
And which tab is it under? Parts and left?
It's on, no, recent news on the right underneath the picture of the street. Where it says, "Recent News" on the right.
Okay.
Got it?
Yep.
Then conceptual plans. Scroll down, there's two pictures with the Mainscape logo on.
Mm-hmm.
And go underneath that, and right at the bottom is EnSite Final Plan.
Okay.
And click on, click on that.
There we go.
Now, that's what we're voting on today.
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved by the Landscape Advisory Committee.
Yes, that was approved before I became on last day.
That's my only question to you, but I would like to speak to Mainscape when they come.
Please continue. Mainscape, oh, I'm sorry, are you finished with Kathleen?
I am, yes. I just wanted to make sure that I knew what the Landscape Committee had approved, because I want to support what you're doing.
Right, they approved. I wasn't on the committee at that time, so that's what they approved.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Representative from Mainscape, would you please come to the podium? Hi, could you give us your name, please?
I'm Nancy Clark. I'm the Landscape Enhancement Manager for Mainscape.
Thank you. I have questions for you.
Hi, Nancy. Hi. I know you did some renderings yourself.
Yes.
But the renderings we're looking at on the big screen there, EnSite's rendering, correct?
You know, I have to be perfectly honest, those don't look like what's on the plan.
Because this is what the $97,000 quote is based on. And I want to make sure that that's what you're going, that's what you're going to deliver if we approve it.
That is different than that.
That is different. This is not what we're planning. This is not what's on the plan.
What's the date on that on the corner? Be darned.
Now I'm confused.
Oh, I can't read a date, sorry. It's just too blurred.
So, so what is-
And that is not the plan. We're not planting oleanders.
So who decided that?
Excuse me?
Who decided not to put oleanders in, for example?
Oh, I get, well, there's some annuals in there, there are two, there are palms, there are thrynax palms, there are Alexander palms.
September 17th, 2015.
Perennial peanut.
Okay, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how we arrived at the $97,000 figure based upon the specification that was sent out.
From the specifi, from the specifications that were distributed to us about two weeks ago.
And does that not include this particular EnSite drawing?
No. That is not part of-
Now I don't understand how, how we've moved from this, then, to what we're supposed to approve today.
Mr. Senior, for the record, just that the date is 9/17/15 on the EnSite plan that's up on the screen that's on the district website.
Okay, so-
And this EnSite plan is dated February 12, 2016, and it is different.
Okay, so-
That is the one we are, we all based our quotes on.
So what happened in between this picture and that? Who made the changes? Was that EnSite, or who did?
I believe it was the committee that did that.
The Landscape Advisory Committee?
Yes, because I do know originally when these plans came out, we were very concerned about the size of the plant material, that it was going to require excessive amount of maintenance. And that was one of the reasons we were changing this plan, was to decrease the maintenance because of the safety issues out there on the Boulevard. And with the, both the oleander and the silver buttonwood, they can both get very wide. That is, I believe, a six-foot-wide median at the most, and those buttonwoods and oleanders can easily reach eight to 10 feet. So then we're still in a really serious situation as far as maintenance. And that's, I do believe that's why they went back to EnSite and had it changed.
So EnSite approved the change, though? That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Because their name's on this thing.
Yes.
And I don't want to just approve this $97,000 if EnSite-
It's on this one.
It's on there.
Right.
And the other bids, April, the 140 and 180, they're based on the same spec, are they?
Yeah, yes. I, I think what might have happened is when they made the changes, we incidentally did not get the revised plan updated on the website.
Okay, that clarifies that, thank you.
But all, but the plans went out by invitation only to, to a list of bidders. So they got, so everything was bid on the appropriate plans.
Of this $97,000, presumably some is for landscaping, some is for irrigation?
Yes, sir.
What's the split?
Um-
Roughly?
Same.
About $13,000 of irrigation?
Thirteen and eighty, thirteen and eighty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's about right.
I've got no more questions right now. Or I may have, when I hear my colleagues speak.
Gary?
Margaret, you were the one that pointed this out to me initially, that this is not what we originally saw. Can you help me, help me get to where I'll need to get to, which I don't even know what it is?
Well, and I remember the Landscaping Committee having some concerns about the plants that were originally going to be placed in this area.
That is correct.
And there was some talk that there was going to be some changes, but this was the first time I had seen what those changes were going to be. And that was why I really, in particular, wanted to take a look at these documents and see what the changes were going to be. In looking at these, I don't have any objections. They look as though the things that were decided upon will actually issue saying fit in these areas better, probably require less maintenance. Some of the plants are the same. I mean, you stayed with the Alexander palms.
Right, we still have the Alexander's. And then they, I think they changed out the oleanders and the silver buttonwood with the thrynax radiatus. Which again, are going to be much safer on the Boulevard.
The Florida thatch palm, is that?
Yes.
I don't know the scientific name, sorry.
Yes, that's Florida thatch.
Okay.
How much color are we going to have in this latest spec, in your opinion?
The majority of your color is going to come from the dwarfexoras, which are going in a straight-line base under some of the palm trees. I don't remember if they were the Alexander's or the thrynax. And then you're going to have perennial peanut, which is going, you have a lot of perennial peanut, almost 6,400. And those have a real pretty, it's a ground cover, they're out on Daniels, they're everywhere. They have a real pretty little yellow flower almost all year long. Very, very low maintenance, easy to maintain. And then again, they, on almost every bullnose, they have annuals. So you're going to have a big flush of color there.
Gary? Still struggling with why didn't we have, you know, this is a nice color visual, what Margaret has, not, you know, any fault to Margaret, is just some black and white thing.
And I just-
Doesn't do a whole heck of a lot for you.
I copied it from Cal just now, tonight.
How hard is it to create this? Yes, ma'am?
Can I, can I comment? I think part of the issue that we're having here, if I understand it correctly, because I got, you know, I jumped into this process, learned a little bit about it the week that Scott and I doubled up, and I was with Scott his last week. And I jumped into the process with the committee, and all's I knew is that these proposals were coming to me on February 29th, so I immediately had to get a schedule. I worked with Tyler, and we set, we had a schedule set. So I jumped in and advised the committee that we needed to meet, because I thought we were going to have to rank these, these proposals, not realizing what had been done before me, and that the plan had already been set, there's nothing to really discuss other than the lowest bid. So unfortunately, and I apologize, that's what happened to that meeting, is I realized that there was nothing, there was nothing actually to rank. And I believe what has transpired with this whole project, because it's part of the road rehab project, and that we were kind of caught at the, behind the eight ball as far as having the palm trees removed, that then we realized we had to have this landscaping job. So everything is on a huge time constraint in order to stay on the schedule with the road rehab project, which is why you got it the way that you did, and I apologize for that. And I kind of thought that you had already had the plans. Obviously, these plans were brought before you, but I think what had happened is they made some adjustments at the committee, we had new plans, and inadvertently, I believe this transpired the week that, Scott's last week, and we didn't get them posted to the website, trying to get everything rolling and in progress to stay on top of things. And unfortunately, that one slipped. So I believe that's probably another reason of why we don't have this type of layout in the revision to actually demonstrate that for you, because we're trying to, to get everything done in the ninth, ninth hour here.
Can I ask, how did the gentleman in the back, I can't catch your name, but can you come on up for a sec, please?
May I sit down? Well, it's just getting a little crowded here.
If I was in your shoes, I'd dump it in his lap, especially if I'm going to ask.
Zane, Zane Stoneman.
Your name, I would-
Zane Stoneman.
He looks like he's got broad shoulders, so be prepared.
All right.
How did you calculate the cost for the irrigation?
Bid specs. They were specified in there, they told me what we needed to bid, and we bid it per the specifications of the plan.
Could you educate just a poor boy like me? How do you, you calculate it by the running foot, by the-
We'll calculate it multiple different ways, but what we do is take parts, labor, material, put it all in together, and come up with a, come up with a price.
All right, so it's, how many feet would you say this, this is?
It's on the plan, I mean, the drip, the drip footage is on the plan.
I've got 6,363 feet drip height.
Okay.
We've got five drip filter kits, 15 drip flush valves, and 114 bubblers are the main components of the, of the thing, along with filters, filtration systems for the, for each valve. There's five valves associated with these islands.
And how many plants?
There you go.
Hey, now, thank you.
Olé!
6,400. See, the tactic here is a tag team, right?
Well, we have approximately, well, we have 6,399 perennial peanut. We have close to 400 horizontal cocoa plum, almost 300 dwarf redex zora, 29 thrynax palms, the Florida thatch, 19 Alexander palms. And I will be honest, I don't remember the number of annuals.
1,457.
Right. So ballpark, that's where we are.
So in other words, in a year, we're going to be replacing 1,457 annuals?
Yes. No, actually, you will be doing that probably several times a year.
Freddie, we do four times in Gateway?
Three times. We have three rotations on Gateway Boulevard.
Is there a reason why, again, bear with me now, why we couldn't do some more perennials to do something for the long run rather than the non-cost-effective annuals?
Right. I do know that in the areas where you have traffic, where they're going to be turning, you do have a limit on the height, and that may be why these bullnoses, they've put in the annuals, because they will stay low, because you do need to have your, your sightlines have to be low. I forget how far back it is, but it's all in the regulations, and with this going to be turned over to the county, you know, we have to follow by those regulations.
Aren't there low perennials, though?
There's not that many that are going to stay colorful. That's why we use the perennial peanuts so much, because it does have the nice yellow flowers, and it'll only get about this high. You know, it stays very low, you mow it two or three times a year, and that's it. But as far as keeping something very low for your line of sight, coming out of Stony Brook, out of the condominiums, that's all very important, that they have to be maintained very low there.
So Margaret, you-
And I believe it's-
The peanut stuff instead of annuals?
Well, the, the issue is, remember, Gary, that the annuals are planted on all of the, like, bullnoses, all the way up and down Gateway Boulevard.
Understand.
So, I mean, it's to keep it all uniform. Of course, I feel like it should be the same. It's just a continuation on the Boulevard you'll drive down.
Understand, but we've got to be somewhat cost-effective as well. And if we do it here, then the next time that you went to replace the annuals, which are based upon what the young lady just said, every, every three to four months, then the next time around, couldn't you replace them with yellow peanut?
I think there's another, another piece to this, and that is what we've got, land architects are going to come up with for the master plan.
Right.
That's something, that's the next, that's the next shoe that's going to drop. And that, that will determine-
Yeah.
That will determine how we're going to raise the bar throughout the community.
Exactly, exactly. And I don't know if EnSite is going to be the architect on that, or who is-
No, I don't think-
You know, so, yes, things could very well change with a new landscape architect coming into the picture, very easily.
I do have a question. Margaret, did you finish?
I was just going to say, to clarify for Gary, the annuals every three months are replaced all the way up and down Gateway Boulevard. It's just, just a section.
Al, Cal, Cal, I think you and I should have a discussion on this. We're on contract with Mainscape to the tune of 800,000 bucks a year. I don't know the number, top of my head, it's not far off of that. But, but because of all of what's gone on with the royal palms and et cetera, there hasn't been any maintenance requirement for that section of Gateway Boulevard now for six months.
Oh, we've-
To the extent that you would have done had we kept things in place.
The only thing that was removed were the royals, so we've still been maintaining the turf.
A lot of residents, and it's not your fault.
Right.
A lot of residents have complained, certainly to me as a supervisor, that it looks terrible. And I've been saying, well, just wait, we can't, you know, we've got to take the streetlights out of there, we're going to take the palms out of there, we're waiting for the Landscape Committee. But in reality, I'm, I'm wondering whether Matt LaBorda would have a discussion with Cal and make, do some kind of a credit for the, that section that they haven't, that you haven't maintained.
Well, like I said, we have been maintaining the turf, which we've always maintained the turf. That's no different.
But you clearly haven't been, and it's not your fault, it's just the circumstances. But there are certain aspects of this that hasn't been maintained because of what we've faced. And therefore, I think it would be reasonable to ask for a credit.
Well, let me, tomorrow, when we get to work, I will forward an email to Matt, and also to our regional manager, and let them sit down, discuss it, and get back with you guys.
Particularly if we're going to vote in favor of Mainscape on this.
Cool.
And the nice thing you will know is on our bid, we did include our maintenance. We did not charge you any additional maintenance.
You did.
For the year.
That's something, if my colleagues support Cal talking to Matt LaBorda, trying to get a credit, that would be helpful.
Okay. Chair would like a motion to approve this recommendation for Mainscape in the amount of $97,000, what's that, $24? May I have a, a motion, may I have a second?
Second, go.
Go ahead.
Why don't I, this is for Gateway. Let, let Rod make the motion.
Will you make the motion?
I'll make the motion, of course.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no further conversation.
There is, there is one comment, and that is the question, the matter of funding this. The $97,000 for clarification should come out of the road turnover capital budget. Does that, you understand that?
Sure.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote for zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're now ready for staff reports. Mr. Press Counsel, would you have things for us?
Yes, sir. A few items, if I may. The, tomorrow morning, I'll be having a conference call with Mr. Chris Shields, he's the attorney for the Villas of Gateway Greens, to go over my comments concerning, and discussion about whether or not we still need to have individual easements for the backyard drainage easements. My reading of the documents indicates we do, but we'll have that conversation tomorrow, see if we can do it easier than, appreciate what Ed Tinkle did in the past, he prepared all the legal descriptions, but we still may need to go that route. So we'll have that conversation tomorrow. The, on the AED protocol, I've been, it's been frustrating trying to work with local emergency service providers and fire districts, they've not responded to my phone calls. So we're going to reach out to some other fire service areas to get some ideas on their protocols, so we can bring this back to the board as soon as possible. That's we're trying to do that.
Would you explain in two sentences or less for the audience exactly what you're talking about?
Oh, on the AEDs, automatic external defibrillators, the board has, in concept, approved, having the staff prepare and bring back to the board for consideration and adoption, a policy and protocol for the acquisition, placement, and maintenance of external, automatic external defibrillators at the district offices, the commons pool, and the Sherman Soccer Complex, along with a, a training program for the staff. And in our insurance carry, we had a discussion, Scott Connell, when he was here, he and I had a conversation with our insurance carrier, who offered a number of different protocols, or just all kinds of different protocols out there. And to bring it back to the board before the board embarks on that particular journey, because the board is committed to doing that for the citizens and residents of the community at those facilities. That was three sentences, I think.
It was. The board's committed to considering what you bring back.
Yes, sir.
If we're not committed to actually, to the external defibrillators at this time.
You'll evaluate the time we bring back the policy and protocol.
Thank you.
For consideration.
Gary, you don't look happy. South Trail wouldn't respond?
I've not had a phone call back from them yet, no. I know, I'm surprised. I will try again.
We have a phenomenal relationship with South Trail. They provide their fire truck, get every holiday event, et cetera. Fabulous guys. We respond in kind, with cookies and some pizzas and some other stuff, et cetera.
But Tony's an attorney calling, they're worried.
That may be, and I was trying to be nice, and I was explaining why.
All right, so here's what I'm saying, April.
(laughing).
I would think that possibly if April called and introduced herself as the new operations person, et cetera, that we might be able to get a little bit of motion here. Good idea. Would you put that in?
No problem, and I use my nice attorney voice, as opposed to mean attorney voice.
I didn't know you had one.
It could be very pleasant, yes.
Second item, Mr. Manager, or Mr. Attorney?
Just a second one, the, in Pelican Reserve, there was a question about how the utilization of the remaining funds from the 2013 refunding. I'm trying to establish, and sent out an email to establish a conference call with Danny Nelson, myself, April, and or Cal, and Stephen Blum, Nancy Hall, from the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee, to, and the bond council, to discuss the possible utilization and approaches on those remaining funds. So hopefully, we can set that up for next week, and come back to the board with the report.
Thank you. Tony, we mentioned the road turnover a few minutes ago. Can you give us a, a quick hitter on how much paperwork you're going to have to produce, and has it been started, and how long is it going to take?
Yeah, my, I haven't gone back and looked at it exactly, but my recollection was the Lee County will require, you know, various conveyance documents and title work for that. The documents themselves are, are easy to prepare, the title work, and I've not yet ordered that, because typically in a transaction, title work has to be current, within a certain period of time of the transaction, I'll ship to order it again and have it updated. So as opposed to incurring additional costs, I've held off until we get closer to the point in time, which probably should be another month or so, I'll order the title work and begin the document preparation.
And after you begin the document preparation, how long do you think it'll take you?
It won't take that long, and then I can just submit that to Lee County for the, it'll take me just a day, a couple of days to prepare the documents.
Question for the attorney. Soccer, please?
Oh, I was going, I wasn't sure if April was going to do that or not, but on Fairway Lakes, we've not forgotten Fairway Lakes and the streetlights. Again, April has come on board, and she's at the deck running, and sometimes the deck has heaved up and down as the waves have crashed over the deck. And so we are going to get together to focus on the Fairway Lakes and have a recommendation for you, if not the next board meeting, the meeting after that.
What's the recommendation for?
Fairway Lakes, streetlights, Fairway Lakes, the FPL.
Yes, I understand, what's the recommendation for? The lights have been fixed.
Well, the question is whether we have a continual obligation and what we do about conveyance.
Correct.
Okay, as far as, as far as taking on the maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
The continual maintenance of that.
All right, I just want to be sure, because they have been fixed.
I understand.
Like, who owns it?
That's correct. That whole question about if not, do we want to keep them, and how do we arrange for the continual maintenance of that?
I understand.
And on, on the soccer agreement, there's a memorandum, I apologize for the lateness of that. And the recommendation from, from staff is to authorize the chairman to initial the agreement as, as revised by Mr. Allison, so as to continue the utilization of the fields by the current program. The, and then work with Mr. Allison between now and August to see if, you know, can come to a further accommodation, then decide further as how to proceed.
I have a comment on that.
Please.
Yeah. This is a sensitive issue, that we've got a bit of a standoff going here. This is a sensitive issue, that we've got a bit of a standoff going here. Allison is clearly saying he's not going to disclose his financials. And, you know, we have to ask ourselves, well, what are we going to do with the financials if we got them? On the other hand, we can't have Lacy dictating terms to the landlord either. And, and then the other part of the equation is that we don't want to damage a very, a very healthy kids program. And I feel that as a supervisor, I don't want to do anything that's going to damage a soccer program that's taken years to build. So what we have to figure out is a middle ground, some kind of a way for, and I'll, I'll talk to Mark, I meet him in Starbucks every few months, but formally, I think staff has to find some kind of a middle ground that, that both parties can live with.
Yes. We agree and we're working towards that objective. It's, we're still a long ways off. And it could, that's why we looked at August, which probably in his mind is a little early, but I think that Gateway needs to know where we're going with this, where other options can be considered. Because I think the board, everybody, the ultimate goal is to be able to provide a opportunity for the kids to play soccer.
It is, and, you know, it, the, the problem here, unlike Cape Coral and some other parts of Lee County, all our, all our eggs are in two baskets, flag football and GSA. And this is a massive vacuum if they went somewhere else. And now we're, we're spending two-hundred-and-fifty grand a year on soccer fields with nobody playing on them. So we've got to figure out what we want to do, and there, there might be ways to bring Lee County into this discussion.
Sure.
And, and I, I've already had some offline discussions with the powers that be there to see whether we can sum our joint forces, and I encourage, of course, already forty percent of the players are people that do not live in Gateway. So that would make sense to consider that route as well.
Gary, I heard, I saw what fingered aside.
In line with this, the tenant not dictating to the landlord, who is losing an awful lot of money every year to maintain these assets of ours, but yet we've got a tenant who refuses to give us the financials, and you talk about an established relationship, we're following in line with a relationship that's been ongoing for twenty-plus years. We now have a new tenant that's starting to try to change everything, but we're the one that's really spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain our assets, yet he's dictating the terms. In addition to that, I believe he's also changing the insurance coverage policy as well. How much longer do we keep listening to this party dictating the terms to us when we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars on maintaining these things? And then what would be the next thing? Sooner or later, you have to put the brakes on, and you have to look at that person and say, that was enough. So, the, the big loss here, last but not least is, as Roger said, forty percent of the people that are participating don't even live in Gateway, yet we just spent how many minutes on discussing the possibility of people going into the pool that don't live in Gateway any longer, yet we know that forty percent of this particular group are not Gateway people. So we're losing all this money to accommodate a person that's dictating new terms, and only sixty percent of the participants are even part of Gateway.
Members of the board, it pains me to tell you that I regretfully do not agree with the good portion of what my colleagues just said. I don't think that we're losing money when we're spending it to maintain the soccer fields. I don't think we're losing the, the concept of Gateway as a beautiful place to live by continuing a soccer program. While others may think it's important that we see the financials of this organization, I don't think it's important at all, and I will be very distressed if we don't continue our relationship with the soccer program.
Margaret?
I have to agree. I know that previously, we had wanted, when it wasn't the Gateway, I think it was, it was the Christian Soccer Association, there was a lot of requests to see their financials, and there was concerns over how much they were paying so-and-so to run the program. And I thought to myself, it's really not any of our business. And, and although I appreciate what Gary's saying is about the tenant, you don't ask your tenant to open up their, if you decide on a tenant to rent your house, you do not ask them to open up their checkbook and all their financials and see about them. You might run a credit check on them, but you don't ask them for all of their financials.
This isn't a residential rental, it's a commercial lease.
It was.
And a commercial lease, you're way off base, Margaret.
Well, you didn't make that clarification, you just said tenant, and so I took it for, in a different direction, but I still, my, my personal issue is, is that I don't have to see their financials. If we do not think that we're charging them enough to use our fields, then we need to look at user fees. But as far as, as looking at their financials and deciding whether they're paying us enough money, I, I don't see where that helps us. It's user fees that we're talking about, and that's what, where we are as a governmental entity, we need to be looking at our user fees, and if those aren't accurate, then that's what we need to look at.
Then when do we look at them? Or is it something, again, that gets pushed to the back of, we haven't got time?
Well, the parks, the, the soccer fields are parks. Parks don't make, if you are looking at the soccer fields and the pool and the fun park to make money for Gateway's, Gateway District, you're looking in the wrong place, because parks do not make money. Ask the city, ask the county, they don't, they never even break even. There are amenities that make the community nice, and that is an amenity that makes the community nice. People like that it's there, they want to buy in Gateway because it's there, and I don't want to see those soccer fields not being used, because then, then it is a waste.
I think, I think there is an, I would like to support an idea of the staff looking at more diversified use of the fields, not having all our eggs in two baskets down the road. I, I agree with Bill, we shouldn't try and destroy a good program that's working for the kids. But I think the, the staff, as part of this review, should, should consider talking to Lee County, because I do know that they, they are short of facilities for their soccer programs around Lee County, and they may be interested in some kind of shared usage of our facility here, and we get more user fees as a result. And I, and I would encourage that. I don't see what's wrong with joining forces with Lee County, considering that forty percent of the users are already from outside Gateway. I've had discussions with, with Compendigrass and, and the sports director, and, and they, I think, would be willing to engage in some discussions on that, if it makes sense.
Mr. Manager, could you have those discussions, please? The next, Mr. Attorney, are you finished?
Yes, I think we need to have a motion to author and a vote to approve, authorize the chairman to initial the soccer agreement in those three locations, as revised, and in the materials that were provided yesterday.
I have a motion.
So moved.
Second, please. I have a second, Mr. Senior is the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, four to zero. Thank you very much. Are you finished now?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Engineer, front and center.
Yes, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have one item on the agenda, and I have a second item not on the agenda, I just want to give an update, but at the last board meeting, we looked at, we had put together a conceptual plan for this operations building for a potential expansion, and the direction of the board was to look at costing. Now, this is just budgetary, conceptual costing, and this is, you know, we're just looking for your consideration, there's no motion that's necessary, but if this is something that the board would like to move forward with in the future, you've at least got information. I, I think, as at least Mr. Senior would agree, I, I think there are probably some questions that you need to answer, is what the future of your, your needs are as far as staff and that sort of thing, before you possibly start, you know, doing this, but at least this is something for budget purposes, since we're entering that time, if this is something you want to do in the near future or the long-term future. At a minimum, though, I will say, we, you know, we do have building issues that, that need to be addressed, so regardless, and, and those items are, are on here as well. But, you know, one of the items, too, the, it was discussed previously about the possibility of sprinklering the building, and we did get a cost where we, I, Tetra Tech didn't, but the district had gotten a cost to actually sprinkler the existing space, and I think that quote was around thirty-five thousand for the additional space, we increased that to, to fifty thousand. So anyhow, you've got those costs in front of you, it's just a range, and that range is dependent on to what level you actually want to take it if you decide to move forward. So, that's all I have.
Please, please stay at the podium. Questions, for Danny? I have one.
Yes, sir.
As I look at your diagram, it, it seems to me that this is a reflection of what we talked about at the last meeting.
Yes, yes, sir.
In answer to my question at that time, you said, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we could expand this, I'm going to talk, these, from two to three bays with the land area that we have back there, is that correct?
You would add another bay. Essentially, you have three. You would add another bay, you would actually have two full usable bays. Right now, you have one usable bay.
Right.
So, but you would actually have two bays as opposed to, to three. You would add another bay, you would have two, you currently have three bays, if you will, but you really only have one usable bay. So you would end up with two usable bays in this case. If that makes sense.
I didn't ask that right. Is it possible to put another one on the building in addition to what you have in this diagram?
It would be, it would be getting, I, I'm not positive, and the reason why I'm not positive is you have setbacks that you're getting, you're getting pretty close to your property line, you've got setbacks you'd have to maintain, so we'd have to look at that and see if the feasibility of, of doing that.
Well, okay, the reason I ask, at some point, Mr. Newfeller. You know? Had indicated that we might want to consider doing some of our maintenance, lawn maintenance in-house.
Right.
Which would require.
Right.
Some equipment. And I was just trying to think ahead as to whether or not it made any sense to.
There's a plan for that, too, wherein we could have additional, at a rather low cost, that would be over here, which would house equipment.
And in fact, he has that in the table. He has an outdoor storage area that's in the, in the table.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I thought that was just for.
Generators and things like that. No, it, it could, it could house lawn equipment.
Yes.
I will say, I mean, we can certainly take a site plan and see how much further we can take the building out, that's a relatively easy thing to, you know, to do.
Well, I'm not going to ask you to spend that extra money if it makes no sense.
That's easily added on at a later date, if that's a decision that's made.
Any other questions for Danny? Thank you very much. You have one other issue, I believe?
Yeah, just a.
Item, I'm sorry.
A verbal update, and I'll, we'll come back to the board at the next meeting with a memo, and just wanted to update the board on where we stand with the, the SRF process, the facilities plan. As we're, we're going to be nearing, bringing a document before you, we have a draft facilities plan of the technical, it's being reviewed by some of my senior engineers. Stephen is also working, there's a financial component, so Stephen is working on that. We have also talked to DEP about where we stand, because if you recall, we submitted the request for inclusion, that was the, that was essentially the application that got the process rolling, and they've confirmed they have that, we are in their system, there's nothing more that they need to do at this time. Our next steps are to complete the facilities plan. Once the facilities plan is completed, and staff and, and Gateway is accepting of that, it will come before this board for formal approval. That's a process that, at that point, would go to, to SRF. So there would be a public hearing, that would have to be advertised, and that would be at a regularly scheduled meeting, and then a resolution adopting or accepting the facilities plan. So the facilities plan, the adopting resolution, and the advertisement would then go as a package to DEP. Once DEP receives it, they'll, they'll review the facilities plan, and they'll send the facilities plan out to other state agencies that may have involvement, like DEP, DOT. Every state agency gets a chance to look at it. Some of them won't apply, like DOT will, will get it, but DOT, DOT will say, we don't have any roads in Gateway, it doesn't affect us, thank you very much. That's called the clearinghouse process. Once they're satisfied with that, it will go on their public hearing. They have, they have two public hearings every year, sometimes they have three. They always have one in February, and they always have one in July or August. So essentially, what our deadline will be to get the facilities plan and package to them will be in the June timeframe, that will give them the time to have it reviewed and to get it on their August public hearing. Once that takes place, then we can have the packages ready for bidding, they'll have requirements of documents that have to go into the package supplemental conditions that will go out to the bidders with information that are required, like Davis Bacon and, and that sort of thing. At that same time, you can go through the actual loan application process. So I'll, I'll come back with a memo, just wanted to update you where, where we're at and what that process entails. But the timing is good, and then I think the reins have kind of helped with that, because the next, you know, we couldn't get anything on their agenda until August anyhow.
Am I correct in assuming that at some point, you are going to send to Mr. Blum some of these details, so he can do some pricing for us?
Yeah, well, he's, he's working on the financial side, and it's financial information about the district and, and what we'll do within the next, probably within the next couple of weeks, we'll actually, we can send him the facilities plan itself, which has cost estimates and, and those sort of things for, for the project, certainly.
Questions for Danny?
Yeah. A few months ago, Danny, we had Joe De Cerbo's recommended guy standing there, Corbett Alday, who you know very well.
Yes.
And he excited the board members at the time by suggesting he could get us a zero interest SRF loan, or something very close to zero. When would be a good time to invite him back?
I would probably say the April timeframe, because what I would like is maybe the first meeting in April. What I would actually like is to, to have the facilities plan on the agenda at either the second meeting in April or the first meeting in May for the public process and the, and the accepting of it. And I think maybe before that would be a good time, and we can certainly get a copy of that over to, over, you know, to Corbett to, to take a look at in advance.
So what kind of date should I have in mind for Corbett to be coming back?
I, I would say that the first meeting in April would be a good timeframe to have him come back.
April seventh, then?
Is that, is that whatever date that is?
April, is it? What's the first date, what's the first meeting in April?
Seventh.
Are we going to invite Corbett Alday for that then, meeting then, Cal?
If you would like.
Mr. Chairman, what do you want to do?
I think that's fine. If, if Danny thinks now is the time, I'll respect his professional judgment.
Yes, sir.
Shall we have the manager make that connection?
Sure.
Mr. Manager, will you please do that?
You got it.
Thank you. Danny, anything else?
No, sir.
Anything for Danny? Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this, this proposed office expansion, twelve hundred square feet, to me, it's a, it's kind of a repeat of what I said two weeks ago. It comes back to Cal's proposal. You know, with this comes the human side of it. To me, we've got to, we've got to figure out what our organization is going to look like. Are we going to handle in-house maintenance, for example? What, how many people are we going to have over the coming few years, if we're all going to be on the board for a few years, whoever's, we've got to think about the management organization, who's going to be in these offices before we build them? And I think that your idea of a workshop is, is a great idea, and I think we should do it, and all this goes hand in hand. I'm not comfortable expanding an office unless we know who's going to be in it.
And I think the purpose of this is to give you an idea of, one, is it feasible? The answer is yes, and then, two, the estimated cost for the size that you'd be looking at. I certainly wouldn't even support moving forward with anything at this point, I think it's too early, but at least you know that this is an option that you have.
Well, keep plugging, Cal, because I'm in favor of your workshop idea.
Okay. Thank you, Danny.
I must leave.
Okay, there you go.
Is there any news on that thirty-five thousand overrun from KCCS? Or is that in their hands?
They have provided the backup, and we forwarded it to, to Gateway, so we probably need to discuss it. But they provided, they provided all the man-hour backup and everything for that, as the board had asked for.
And is that going to come to the board at the next meeting, or when?
I, I think, yeah, it was too early to bring it back to this.
I received it, I didn't realize that it was coming back to the board. All it is is timesheets.
Well, I guess we may need to look at the minutes from what was.
I didn't, I didn't realize, I, I thought, I thought we had, I thought we had made the.
Was it contingent upon?
The change order, contention on getting, the district getting that backup, and I have that backup, and it's just waiting. And I have that backup and it's just waiting for the March invoice because that's when it's going to show up in the bill.
Yeah, I don't recall.
Well, I'm certainly personally interested in seeing that backup. I'd like to see how the 35,000 overrun was spent.
Well, the documentation that we received isn't going to show that because it's just timesheets.
It's, yeah, it'll, it'll show you that individuals worked. There, there, it won't be a detailed breakdown of exactly what they did, but you'll see the level of, of individual and you'll know, well, this was an inspector level, this was administrative. So, you'll see that level. They're, they're simply timesheets.
Okay.
Well, shouldn't they be able to provide that breakdown? Shouldn't they be able to provide a detail of what they actually billed us for rather than just say, "Oh, 35 sounds good"?
Well, keep in mind, if, if that was something that was, you know, would have been a requirement at the time that they were preparing those, we're going back, we're going back a few months now. So, they would, there, certainly there are emails, there are ways to, to kind of reconstruct to a degree what they did. Daily reports in the field, internal correspondence, things like that. So, we could certainly ask for that additional information. And we probably have the daily reports, you know, already.
I, I think there's a, there's some responsibility on their part to justify the overrun to, to the board here that's approved it.
We'll, we'll certainly ask for it.
There's a follow-up to that, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I think it's appropriate for the board to request and require that of them because it was outside the scope of the contract and the board is after the fact authorized that, those services. So, I think it is appropriate.
We'll, we'll ask for it.
Okay, so I'm not providing the timesheets right now. We're going to ask for additional information and then, and then I can compile that together and then send it out to you.
Does that need a motion?
No, I don't think it does.
I think your, your direction previously was sufficient enough.
One real quick item, Mr. Chairman, before Danny leaves. Tyler Wainwright, who must be watching the meeting, hello Tyler.
He is.
Was, was kind enough to forward me an email from Lee County, WCI, with regards to turnover process. Email's going back to February with John Fedema about what the county is requiring, including a survey and that kind of work. So, I'll get with John Fedema so we can get that ball rolling from the district's perspective and maybe coordinate with WCI's engineers on any survey work that may need to be performed. Yeah, they've, they've, you know, and so there, and Rick Bylansky even offered to say, "Hey, let's have a meeting with everybody so we can coordinate together with all the parties." We'll do that with, a work of Danny in April and Tyler.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Yes, sir. Just to update the board, utility manager, we have gone through and we invited seven candidates and four interviews. All seven had extensive experience in utility management. Two were PEs and two, because of the salary, opted not to interview. So, we physically interviewed five. And we have two that we're real impressed with. One is a PE and the other one is not. And we're going to conduct just a little more research on them and also have another round of interviews with the two candidates. The, that's where we're at. And I just wanted to make sure if the, the board had anything that they would like to know at this time, then I'll share that with you.
Tell us about the guy that isn't an engineer.
Extremely impressive. Extensive experience working with boards, elected boards. He has experience in planning, creating capital improvement plans, various different detailed reports. He, he has, he owns currently his own operations firm in Vermont. His son's running it right now. He started it and it's, it's, all three of us were blown away by the qualifications and the presentation and, of this individual.
Do you intend to share these two, the resumes of these two individuals with the board or are you just going to recommend the preferred candidate?
I'm okay with sharing. Tony, do you see any issues with sharing the resume with the board?
Your public records.
Okay. We can send that.
It's a pretty key position. I don't mean to interfere with the process. I'm genuinely interested in the, in the difference between the engineer and the non-engineer here.
Yeah.
You'll take care of that, have that
Yes.
sent out to us the next few days, please. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, just, we're looking at either April or May on a workshop, but if that works for you.
Well, you, you were going to canvas us as about our free dates.
And I, I haven't done that, I'm sorry. It's only been two weeks.
Maybe go to the financial report. Steven, would you join us, please? Would you point out anything of your financial report that you think we ought to hone in on, please?
Oh, sure. Let me just do kind of like a top level. First, Steven Bloom, Severn Trent. A couple of things. First off, starting on page 55, wanted to mention you got 91% on your tax or your assessments collected, which is about 164,000 more than where you were last year at this time. So, that's kind of a, a good thing to show.
Now, we have more residential units too.
Oh, yeah. Yes, well, you have more that you budgeted. But again, that's more cash in to the system. Just kind of looking at variances. One variance that I wanted to mention, under Swimming Pool, the utility services is well, you know, or well on its way of exceeding budget. That is a function of us splitting the departments. Meaning, if you look above under Parks and Recs, that utility service is well under budget. It's kind of a flushing out process as we divide those departments. But I did want to mention that just so that if anyone's looking at it, it looks odd, well, you know, why would utility services?
We're going to do something about that.
We can, oh, yeah, absolutely. Another interesting thing on here, propane and natural gas is actually showing a positive variance. It's one of the things we've, we talked about during the budget process. It's actually showing favorable variance right now. We'll see how that goes.
It's been the whole year.
Maintenance and repairs. We did not budget for all of those repairs. So, we are, we'll have to see how the rest of the year plays out, but, you know, we're at about 84% and that's, that's still on page 58, right at the bottom there under Streetlight Services. That's just another variance I wanted to point out. Overall, you know, the general fund is doing very well. You know, usually it's very top-heavy in the first quarter or two quarters of the year because that's when you get a lot of your assessments. But when you look at where your spending is, you're at about 27% of your budget. And looking at it in a level platform, you would be at about 33%. So, your spending is doing very well. That was kind of 001 or your general fund. Didn't really have a whole lot in any of the other funds to mention other than that on 002 or, which is the Pelican Preserve and that starts on page, I'll give you a page here, 60. Just wanted to remind everyone that we do have some expenditures that are not budgeted, that were approved projects. And this will become a part of our budget amendment process, the pond aeration and the pond improvements. That's just something that was approved and we just need to do an amendment for it to fix it with our budget. This is, again, just as a reminder, carrying forward, you know, projects from prior years that the pond committee had asked for and we'll take care of that. That's 002. Let's see, I did want to mention on the enterprise fund, kind of wanted to touch base. Give you a page on that, Cal. Starts on page 71. Just wanted to touch on revenue. When you look at where you are year-to-date versus year-to-date budget, you are short a little bit in a couple of these areas. When this, this particular year-to-date is kind of, you know, based on a level playing field. We'll have to keep an eye on that to see how, as summer months come in, if, whether or not we catch up on that. But I did want to mention, when you compare it to, again, where you were last year, water revenue is up, irrigation is about level and then sewer is a little bit down. But overall, you know, from where you were last year, you're up about $10,000 in revenue. That's kind of top level.
A year or so ago, Mr. Burton, our manager for rates, indicated that we might experience as much as a 7% increase in water revenue with these new meters, as I recall. I don't see evidence of that yet. Do you have any comment?
I would wait until the full meter replacement program is done before we really can see what, what the incremental amount is. Now, again, it should be two different things because, again, your rates change each January as well. So, it's, it's, you know, it's hard to tell right now until that program is complete and, you know, in there for enough, long enough period of time where we can get some data on that.
Are you finished with this?
For that particular item, yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
The only other item, I mean, we included on here a budget amendment.
Okay, but, but, but hold on that.
Sure, okay.
Just a second. I wish I had written down the page number of that 13 bond issue.
85, page 85.
Thank you. Board members, this is the item that our attorney told us a little bit ago. He's going to have a meeting with Nancy Hall and others. The balance in this construction fund is still a million, almost a million three and it's no, no charges have gone against it for several years. And there's, but there is possibility that there will be some charges against it and so we're not going to be able to bank on spending the whole million three. But we are going to talk to the, help me, the attorney.
Bond counsel to, to help us, to give, provide an opinion or some guidance as to whether or not the, any remaining, how the funds can be utilized, basically, based upon the engineer's report from 2013 and desire to do other projects, not necessarily particularly described, but we'll have that conversation as to what latitude the board has or what obligations and/or latitude.
And after those, or hopefully by next month, you and Steve can agree on some kind of footnote we can put on this statement to indicate to anyone who might read it that this million three is not totally unencumbered, I guess.
That'd be part of our discussion to get that guidance also.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Questions? Are you ready to talk to us about your budget revisions?
All right, sure.
I've got questions on the financials. Is this a good time?
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
All right. Page 52, Steven, of the agenda.
I'm not there.
Okay, general fund capital projects column. Way down at the bottom, fixed asset reserves is at zero.
Correct.
And in the approved budget for 2016, we're going to transfer $255,144 into the fixed asset reserve. Why is it not there?
We don't do that till closer to year end, once all the assessment money comes in. But to answer the first part of it, your, your fund balance is showing up under restricted for capital projects.
Yes, 2.043.
Yes, that's, that's your balance.
So, why did we not start with a balance in fixed asset reserve before the 255 is allocated?
This is a function of switching the type of fund. If you remember, this particular, all, all of the, the capital spending was being done through the general fund.
Yeah.
And because of that type of fund, it was showing up in a different place on the balance sheet.
Okay, which takes me, I get it. Page 68, 68. Excuse me, let's get this straight. No, it's not page 68, it's page 53.
53?
Yeah, my apologies, 53. In the approved budget for 2016, we're talking about the enterprise fund now, okay? We're, we're transferring in the approved budget $271,000 into the fixed asset reserve for the enterprise fund. That's in the approved budget for 16. Where is that fixed asset reserve line item on, on the liability sheet for the enterprise fund?
Again, that's.
Page 54 is where I'm looking at.
Right, it's going to, it's right in the column before enterprise. Again, we also have a separate capital project fund set aside, I'm sorry, not, two columns ahead. Capital projects, enterprise fund.
Okay.
And basically, you, you're, you just have your starting balance in there, 255 or your current balance.
And we're going to add 271 to the 255?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Is there any more money intended to be put into that particular line item? Because we're, we're knee-deep in money due to the Lee County settlement.
There is nothing that's been approved. However, you know, if you look at page 53, I think you actually, you guys are probably on there. Right there, you can see a, it's a line item called ICS.
ICS, yeah.
That is what I would consider to be your excess funds. So, you could probably put in there between a million and a million and a half.
Right, so there's.
Which really is the county refund when you look at it.
Exactly where I'm coming from because we've got a utility manager coming aboard and we've got to give him a capital budget to be able to start, get to work on our utility and that is going to need a healthy capital budget.
Correct, yes. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the amendment, but, but you are correct. That's where that would come from.
Yeah, page 58.
58?
Yeah. Just highlighted this utility service. You eventually mentioned it, Steven, Swimming Pool. Why, why is it triple the year-to-date budget? The utility service on the Swimming Pool has gone 2,000 to 6,300.
Well.
What's happening there?
The 2,000 is a function of when we split the department, you know, estimating how much should be in there. And I didn't put enough in there.
Okay, so just.
It's just, it's just a reclass from the Parks and Recs above. Because if you look at the Parks and Recs above, it's got the excess still there.
I guess what's missing is the year, the year previous to date, which we don't see.
And that's kind of a, because we just split out the departments.
Okay, that's all I've got to ask, thank you.
But, you know, we'll, we'll pull some utility bills and see if we can.
I just wondered if we were way over last year, for example.
No, you're, you're not, you're not because when you, really, if you combine them, that's what, you know, where you were last year. If you combine both the departments and you're fine.
Any other questions for Steven? Would you please, I'm sorry. Would you please present your budget revisions, please?
Okay, so the budget amendment, the resolutions on page 91, the, the support behind it is on page 92. And, and again, this is kind of starting the process. We put together the, the resolution, put together this entire budget amendment. But really, I, we wanted to present this. Whether it gets approved, you know, this meeting or the next meeting is obviously up to the board. But the idea is, is that there were projects that were started last year and the projects were not completed. And we've been keeping track of them and making sure that we, you know, have an idea of what's been committed as well as what's been planned. And again, obviously, the plan portion can change based on, on, you know, how the board decides. But the idea being is, is that at the end of last year, those, the budget amounts lapsed. So, this amendment would add back all those projects that are still pending or outstanding into your current year budget and also show you what you would have left over in your reserve fund. So, what this would do, if you kind of scroll down a little bit, your total new budget would be a little bit under 2.1 million dollars. Now, your starting reserve balance for the general fund was 2.2. So, what this means is that if you did everything that has either been started or been planned, you would only have, you know, about $100,000 left over at the end of the year in your, your reserve account.
However, because of the weather and the rain and everything else, we're not going to be able to do.
No, and again, this, this also still keeps up 700,000 for Lake Bank restoration, which if you, if you use the loan to cover that, then obvi, I mean, again, I just wanted to present everything, put it into a big picture. And then, some of these projects you might not still want to do, like the pool rehab. You know, that was something that's got started. Maybe you don't do it till next year. But I, I just wanted to make sure we had something on paper so that there were no surprises. and then to kind of start the discussion, especially as we're, you know, unfortunately getting closer to the budget season and farther away. This is kind of a resolution that would kind of set all that stuff up. You know, again, like the stormwater was barely touched last year, that's $600,000. Obviously, we're still working on the road to turnover. Between those two, you know, by itself, you're talking about a million two. So that's quite a bit of money that you're looking at and wanted to make sure that you had all of the information.
Thank you. Questions for Steve? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution, adopting the proposed budget amendments? As you see it on page ninety-one.
I'll make a motion to approve that if for no other reason for discussion purposes.
Do I have a motion for a second?
I'll second it for discussion, yes.
We have a motion and we have a second. Margaret, since she made the motion, gets to do her discussion first, please. Have I should like to put it on?
No, that's fine. I just, I guess what we need to do is, before we just blanket approve this budget amendment, is to really make a decision if we really want to actually include all of these projects. You know, maybe we need to, um, place a criteria on what we want to move forward and what we want to actually put on hold.
My understanding, Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that these amounts represent decisions that have already been made, is that correct?
Some of them do. I mean, the stormwater certainly does, your road turnover, you, you know, have several committed contracts for that. Pool rehab, no, not, you don't have anything formalized yet for that. But Griffin Road, you do, so, but, you know, by adding these, it doesn't mean you can't subtract others. So it's really not one or the other. Eventually, what has to happen at year end, you know, your total expenditures that you have, your outsources, your budget, you know, has to match that. That's really the only criteria. Whether you adopt this now or spend some time looking for the projects more, you know, that's up to the board to do that. But certainly, you have to have an amendment done by year end.
So actually, the pool rehab, then, is the only one that we don't have contractual obligations on, is that correct?
Yeah, and if you want to refer back to page eighty-three, we've kind of split that out to show you what's actually committed on each project. Now, like, for example, for stormwater, you don't have the full 600,000 committed. However, I'm, you know, not being an engineer, I'm not sure that you can stop that project midstream and not spend, you know, the rest of the 443,000. Obviously, the road turnover, you really don't have much of a, an option with, but stadium lighting, I mean, that's something that's budgeted, we're not amending that budget. But it doesn't mean you're going to use that full 80,000 this year. Perhaps you put that off and decide that between the stadium lighting and the pool rehab, it's about 130,000 that you could, you know, address in a different year. So you certainly do have options, with the exception of these couple of projects that you are basically kind of committed to.
This doesn't restrict any of our options, does it?
It doesn't restrict your options and it doesn't guarantee that you, just because you amend the budget to include a pool rehab, it doesn't supersede any of the other purchasing, you know, the district guidelines and policies and procedures. It just means you now have a budget for it.
And it doesn't mean to say you've got to go ahead and do it.
It doesn't, does not automatically give you authorization.
But this question of Griffin Drive came up two weeks ago. If you look at page eighty-three, Stephen, right at the bottom there, it looks like we spent $200,000 and we had 160 budgeted, so we're over by a lot of money there.
Correct.
This is the reason for this recommended motion to include that over, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because we're actually over, that's before any consideration of lighting.
Sure, oh, sure, yeah.
Right, so we have to approve it.
You're going to have to approve it, but again, if you don't spend on the lighting, then you can, you know, basically use that 80,000 to cover your shortfall in other projects.
I don't mean lighting on the soccer complex, I meant there was a discussion about lighting on Griffin.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
There, I think there, by the way, there's other ways we can get that done. Perhaps we can lean on Lee County to have WCI put that in. So I'm not automatically in favor of this district funding that lighting. That was one out of the three items that we missed out two weeks ago, if you remember. We approved two of them, but not that lighting. So I don't see anything wrong with approving this, it's not saying that we have to go ahead and-
Correct.
And spend the money, which is just, some of it is what we have to do anyway, because we've overspent already.
Yeah, I really think the pool is the only one on here that I'm amending that, that has no committed anything to it. Everything, I mean, everything else on here is-
So what are we doing for 54,000 on the pool? What is the idea behind that? What are the main things that, what are we getting for our money there? Do you remember? What are the main things?
That, the last discussion was, I believe it was, I think it was Yvonne, he basically presented options. And that was really the last, and nothing went further.
Is it to do with ADA compliance and stuff we have to do this year, or?
No, this was intended to save on future propane expense by converting the pool to another, you know, and more efficient energy, so that your propane costs would go way down.
So we've already dealt with that.
And at the time, we thought that that was going to cause more-
So we can strike that out?
Sure.
Can we not strike that out, Mr. Chair?
Well, you can if you want to. At this point in time, this is all a big bunch of actual expenditures and encumbrances for contracts and a bunch of things that we think are going to happen between now and the end of September.
Yeah.
It is not, this is not all cast in stone at this moment.
Got it. Given that we've decided to go with natural gas, this 54 should come out then and we'll just live with the rest, it would seem to me.
We could do that.
We have no plan to do anything at the pool, right?
The cost to convert to natural gas, though?
Eight hundred bucks.
I thought it was 10,000.
Well, there's a capital outlay of $8,000 for the pipe.
And that's what this line item was intended for.
I see, okay.
Now, before, I don't want to-
Even if we move it, we don't have to spend it.
That's right.
Okay.
Keep in mind also, there's a, you know, there is a second page to the amendment. I don't want that to get lost for the enterprise fund as well. It's a much smaller amendment. But again, specifically for like the meter replacement project, you know, year end, the project wasn't completed. There's still some more spending that needs to be done. So we added that, amended that to make sure that we had that approved as we complete that project.
Seems like the motion stands then, and I'll second it.
All right, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second to approve these budget amendments. Steve, would you, before I call for a vote, would you look at page ninety-one with me for just a second?
Sure.
Item number two, resolution shall be effective 24th day of February. Can we change that to the 3rd day of March?
Sure.
With that adjustment, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have four zero. Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, supervisor comments? Gary? Ron?
Yes, one item, the websites. The website that we discussed two weeks ago, just to recap, the discussion's been ongoing since, with Scott and with Diane, and now with you, April. The proposal was to consider Vistalogics, which have got a reputation and a good reference, which has been thoroughly vetted, certainly by me at other places. Comment was made at the board meeting two weeks ago that we should look and make sure that their charges are competitive. And I've acted on that. I've reached out to the lady at Lee County, who's their webmaster, Denise Scott. I had an hour on the telephone with her, amazingly useful conversation. They use Vision Internet in California and they paid $11,000 for their design.
As opposed to?
As opposed to our nine, yeah. And they have 80 different departments, all with their own webmaster. They have a pyramid of webmasters, all collating at the top to this lady Denise Scott. They have their own internal content management system, so they are very wealthy in resources at Lee County. They don't have, we're very thin on the ground, as you pointed out, Bill, here, in comparison. I also reached out to the city of Fort Myers Beach, okay? And they use, they use a different company. And their costs are as follows. Civic Plus is the name of the company, Civic Plus, they're based in Kansas, and I spoke to them at length. The cost of them producing a website for us, and this is a core off-the-shelf website, would be somewhere between 10 and $50,000. And in one case, they charged a company, a government, $430,000 for a website. Their annual fee for a community of 6,000 people, annual fee is $9,000 compared with Vistalogics of $2,400. I've had further discussions with Joe De Cerbo today, who speaks extremely highly of Brian Haas and Vistalogics. He made the point that his board of supervisors have been very happy with Vistalogics over the years, that they've had the Spring Lake website managed by Vistalogics. Their suggestion was made two weeks ago that we have Brian come visitors in person or over the phone. That, I still encourage that. I think it's going to be important for us to move forward on this website sooner than later because it will take the pressure off our staff. At the moment, we heard from Diane at the podium two weeks ago, you know, the way we are at the company who provides our current website, it's very code-heavy. She has, it's not easy to manage the content. Content management, in the case of Vistalogics, is Microsoft-based and it's easy. I think we need to move forward in our digital communications and our interactivity with the residents, as well as make our website more ADA-friendly for visual impaired and for people with motor skills that have difficulty with the mouse, et cetera. Vistalogics can do all that. Bill, I got your email, which is circulated to everybody, saying you don't think that this would be a good time because we're in the throes of road turnover and water meter replacement. I'm not sure I totally am on the same page with you on that, because I'm not sure the same resources in this, of staff that's needed for this website are the same resources applied to road turnover and water replacement. And that's why I would want to raise this again today and ask Callan, April, where you stand on this. Do you think this is a, do you think we should kick the can down the road on this with Vistalogics or whoever? Do you think the road turnover and the water meter replacement are in fact getting in the way of this?
I don't think, I don't think those two particular projects are getting in the way. What has transpired since we had that last conversation is Diane and I started looking at the overall IT infrastructure here at Gateway. And we have a lot of segregated components of IT. So one thing that we started looking at is, and it was mentioned last time we discussed the website design redesign, is seeing where Vistalogic was going to overlap with any existing IT softwares and services. And I don't think we do have that overlap. But what we did, what we did discuss is that right now, we did a little WebEx with Mr. Haas. And what we were concerned about is the amount of staff time that it was going to take. There was a couple of different options that was discussed with him or different perspectives, I guess you could take, that if we expect him just to take our canned website, what we have right now, and redo that and put it on his software, it's going to take probably a minimal amount of Diane's time. I'm not going to have a lot of time to dedicate it, dedicate to it because of all of the other issues. So I felt that it was going to overencumber Diane right now without at least looking at her responsibilities as a whole and maybe trying to divert some of her responsibilities off the desk so we can get her concentrating and working with Brian on this project. Because I think the idea is, we want a website redesign, so we don't want his, we don't want our website on his software. We want it redesigned. We, so I think that there's going to have to be somebody sitting there and involved and getting, you know, giving him the ideas of, well, we would like to do this, we'd like to do that. And one thing that we haven't done is we really haven't collectively, at a workshop level, came down, sat down and written down a program where we would like the website to do this, we would like the website to do that. So we don't have that written parameter down for Diane to take off with and say, okay, well, this is what we want him to do. Let's try to see if you can get it to look like that. So what I'm concerned with is that it's going to take an exceptional amount of her time of us ping-ponging back and forth of what we want this plan to, or this website to look like. And that's where, that's where we came back and we kind of put the reins on it and said, well, I don't know, maybe, maybe right now isn't the time. We've got the huge, we've, we've got the huge meter project going on right now. And, you know, Cindy and I were talking and possibly maybe having, having a lot of ticking and tying done to finalize that, to make sure that we've got all of our ducks in a row and everything is done with that project and possibly having to utilize staff to do that. We've got, you know, Diane's involved in taking all of the minutes. She is the go-to person in the office right now. We've got new staff, I'm new, I'm trying to dig in. She's constantly the go-to person. So what I'm concerned with is getting on board with Vistalogic and us not being able to have the dedicated resources to make this project roll out in the timeframe that you're going to expect it. Because even as is, Brian's saying that it's a 16-month, 16-month project. Is it a 16?
Week.
Week, 16-week project.
I think, I think what you've said is perfectly reasonable. I totally accept what you're saying. So perhaps we should, we should roll this thing forward maybe one or two months and revisit it or something like that, whatever you feel comfortable with. I don't want it to disappear off the radar screen.
Okay.
Because I personally think it's really important for this district to move forward with a good digital interactive website.
I agree with everything you just said.
Just let's, let's make sure that it doesn't disappear off the radar screen. And the other thing is that you said that I think that we can, this rolls into this whole workshop, looking at our staff, what are their priorities? Who's going to be looking, who's going to be holding the baby on this thing? Is it Diane or is it somebody else?
Right.
And we've got to figure that out, and that's another reason for a workshop.
And in the meantime, you know, so it doesn't fall off of the radar, we can start accumulating the ideas and creating a document and start getting that down and maybe visiting, you know, maybe reaching out to Lee County and say, hey, you know, help me design, how do I design this program, you know?
They're very, very helpful.
I, yes, I know a lot, I have a lot of county resources there and they have a very strong IT area.
They have a lot more money than we do, too.
Yes, yes. But it is a philosophy there that they have, that they have the best IT and the resources available.
That's a perfectly reasonable response, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have other items tonight? Margaret?
I just had one, and that was, I know we had talked about going after grant money and we have a lobbyist. And we need an update from these people, so I'm requesting an update on our-
I did actually request an update and receive it. I should have brought it, I didn't. I can read it off my smartphone, if you're prepared to wait a minute for me to load it up. Essentially, it's all going to happen in the next two weeks. There's been allotted, buying with Governor Scott on his requests and the senators and the representatives are caving into some of Scott's requests so they can push through a lot of these water-based requests, because there's a lot of focus on it with the Lake O stuff that's going on. You've read all about that. So there's a lot of- So there's a lot of focus on water quality, and I think things are, if anything, are tilting in our favor rather than against us. And a point, Sue Mullins is the lady who represents David Rambus, she wrote to me and said that what's like, what likely comes out of all this is our request for five million dollars adds up to all of the other, with all the other requests added together, what they do is prioritize. So we, if we get ten percent of that, then we get half, everybody gets ten percent. So half a million dollars or something like that will be the result. It's too early, but we'll, we'll know by definitely early April.
Okay.
I can't report, I could read it, but it won't say much difference.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I can.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for all your hard work. We've made a lot of progress tonight, we are adjourned.
The legislature and their sausage-making and budget deals.
Yes, sir.
You're amazing, they are amazing to watch.
Stephen, don't run. We've got to make sure you get the, carry out.
Yeah, the legislature, Mr. Senior, they're getting the money issues, I mean, they-
They're a teacher, they throw this week.
Oh, my God.
Oh, I did have one, I understand.
They're forcing that, boxing all that going on, and then this bill looks like it's mine, and no, it shows back up again. Last week, sleight of hand, the last two weeks of the session, they're crazy.
All corridors, no.
Yeah, it's crazy.
All done in the corridors. But there is a, there is a big emphasis on water quality this year, as a result of the-
Well, I think that, yeah, they finally realized that, you know, as opposed to wasting that money on salaries, that the number one money, oh, we're getting hammered, from the East Coast, West Coast, the fact you got Nelson and Clausen getting together and stuff.
Yeah, yes.
You know, and all the mayors-